Call meeting order for seven o'clock. Judy, you can take your roll.
Okay.
And number two, approval of the consent agenda. A through G, and I'm just gonna let Bryce go through there. And if you have any questions or any additional time, we'll just try to do it through one. One vote if we can, if not, that's fine.
Unless there's any questions, I must get down to the general fund differences. On that, in your packet. Good job, make a note. Several things on there. Some of our bigger expenses is from utilities or off electric. That's 793. That's a federal program code. And that's part of, and we've talked in the past about using some of these federal funds to try to supply and support our fixed costs for building operations. Be able to get that money back since that money is available. So that's what that 793 is. Code, and try to accrue some of those bigger utility expenses. City of Jersey, 1800 this month. Dow security monitoring. And that's for our firearms. Farmers co-ops, 1400. Travel has started up a little bit more, so fuel cost is going to go up. And notebook communications, IT services, two months, $4,100.
A lot of those are blanket first orders as well, for the later.
So not just now?
Right.
Not just one item there, but yeah. Okay, OSSBA memberships, $2,600. TH Rogers, maintenance supplies, that was for 1300. William Scotsman, $5,254. That's for the remaining balance on the admin building. So once we make that payment for them, that will be it on that admin building. So we'll end some discussions with them on the other portfolio to get that finalized. OSAG, work and comp insurance, that's $18,000. School supplies from Amazon, that was covered. The Minister of Lions donated $3,500 to us this year for school supplies. And so that expense there was covered by some other things as we needed to put that donation. OSIG, our district insurance. It's been a couple months, but that is up about $30,000 for our premium now. And that's because of, we haven't been appraised since about 2005. I think something like that. And so with the addition of the fourth complex and other improvements made to the elementary, Ag Mar, premium plan, so that's $90,000 now. Really great reading program for 1600. And then the last one down there on the list. Stephen L. Smith for financial services. They take care of all of our bond issues for 300. And that's for the year on that. Above that is AT&amp;T. And I want to point that one out, it's $892.83. And that's, we haven't been able to switch over yet to the notebook. We did sign that agreement that the notebook would take over phone service instead of AT&amp;T. And so that is a monthly expense that will go down quite a bit. Also, with long distance service, we'll save probably $400 or $500. Hopefully starting soon. We just gotta get all that transition over. Are there any questions through that list? Lots of big ticket items here in this year. If not, I'll move down to the building fund. And that's a much shorter list. Okay, really just a couple things. Building fund, pest spring. $75 in precision testing. That's our asbestos maintenance testing. And we have to do that yearly. That was it, the building fund. Okay, child nutrition fund. Keystone food service summer meals for $22,528. And we have not received our reimbursements for any of that.
No, they haven't approved our nutrition. So as soon as they do, we can go.
Yeah.
But our plan will be more than that.
Okay. We don't have the same report this month. We kind of have issues with our software right now. So there is a current out, kind of issue with our current balances there for each of the treasury reports. We collected in July a little over $144,000. And I expect for August to be up above that. Gross production numbers today was just around $97,000 for gross production. So if that continues to stay up, and if that'll happen, then that'll be good. All good news there. See, the fund balance, that is still a negative. And that is because of tax protests and that money being withheld. Well, that's really out of our control. We can't. Yeah. And we've communicated with all the rectory auditors and everybody about that. Amanda or Kendra, do you have anything to add on treasures and activity fund report? Okay, ready for confirmation. On G, we do have two fundraisers. Nine three class would like to do a fifty cookie growing at the rodeo. That class has done that for the last couple of years. Estimated profit around $1,000 based off what they've made the last few years. Softball would like to sell coffee. And those fundraisers there would go towards any equipment needs that they have. Then the elementary, it would be the elementary activity fund. They would like to sell pizza by the slice during back to school night for a fundraiser. And that would go back into the elementary activity again.
Anybody needs any additional time to go through the minutes or any need of funds? Otherwise, wait your own motion. Does she have questions? Make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there a second? Judy?
You made the motion?
I did.
You were first, okay. Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number three, discussion and vote to approve the 11th and 12th grade mathematics and science courses taken from the Career Technology Center for 21, 22 school year.
Our partnership with Career Tech, how many, I want to mention this now. How many students are we sitting this year?
I think it's 21, is what I think we're at right now this year.
That's very close to 30, so.
That's a huge improvement, right?
Yes.
So this, to approve 11th and 12th grade mathematics and science courses over there. Why those students are over there enrolled in whatever program that it might be, whether it be automotive, physical design, those other courses. They are able to take a math or science class over there. It's approved.
I'm just curious, what was the cause of the increase in thing? I mean, did they do something different over there, or did we do something?
Our junior class is a large class anyway. And I think that we opened it up in the afternoon, and that seemed to.
Was it time constraint?
Maybe, I don't know. That's the only thing I can really see. Just that class is pretty involved in a lot of things. So maybe we're pretty excited about going over there.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number four, discussion and vote to employer find reason not to employ the following personnel. Kelsey Cloud and Mary Jane Constantine.
Those are two positions that we need dearly. One is per requirement for IDA. And the other, our fifth grade class now is up to 34 students. And that was part of our restructuring plan. So we do need a full-time teacher aid to be in there and assist with that class. They are split at other times during the day. But this will definitely be in lots of best practice for what we can do. So I recommend that we hire both Kelsey Cloud and Mary Jane Constantine.
I'll second. Members made a motion, I second it. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number five, discussion and vote to approve the Junior High and High School handbook changes for 21, 22.
Most of the changes. One of the changes I want to talk about is the semester test policy. With some of our other policies now say you have to be fever free for 48 hours to come back to school. In the past, if you had C, you could only miss one day. So if our parents are going by guidelines, and if their student had C or even B, they may have to keep them home and have automatically exempt them just because they're following our policy. So my big one is our semester test policy. I want to say if you have an A, B, or C, you can have three or fewer absences and still be exempt from the semester test. And in the past, it was if you had an A, you can miss three days. If you had a B, you can miss two days. If you had a C, you can miss one.
Wasn't that way a long time, hasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we did change it. We required everybody, and then we kind of went back. Last year, which, and the way with semester test because of COVID thing.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, used to it was 24 hours on a fever, so you could get home a day and it'd still be all right. But now if it's 48, and we wanted to go by policies, then I think we have to adjust other policies to fit that. Another thing I saw in our handbook, it still says for all of our, and Ms. Jordan will talk about this. Our juniors are going to take the SAT instead of the ACT. SAT has English and math, or the ACT has English, math, and science.
Just different.
We are going to add something for House Bill 1775. It talks about CRT that we will abide by House Bill 1775. So that will be in our handbook. Also, it says in there, one of the big things I saw is the absence a day before an activity. Well, in the time we're in right now, some of our kids may not have the choice to come to school today before an activity. But it says they have to attend half a day before if the activity leaves before school the next day. Well, it may be out of their control. So I just put something in there that if it's out of the student's control and I, and administrator sees fit, that they can still attend, and they can still attend. That way, there's still some flexibility that we have. If it wasn't, you know, if they were quarantined, or if something happened and they couldn't come to school on Monday, and there was an activity on Tuesday, and they could come back to school on Tuesday, well, they should still be able to go to an activity. Another big thing, right now, our handbook has graduation requirements for the college prep plan and for the core plan. Those are never changing. So in our handbook, since it's digital, I'm going to put links. Because the graduation requirements for this year's seniors are different from the graduation requirements for next year's seniors. And since they're ever changing, I think it's easier just to put a link to the State Department website so they can get on and look at their check sheets. So that's the main. Main things we're going to change in there.
Any questions? And then Ms. Jordan has more to deal with the few of those.
I just added a couple of things that you all received for policies there. The internship program, I highlighted it in there so you can find it easily. But it's on page.
Four.
Yeah, four, yeah. And I just put in there because we did have situations where kids could not finish their internship program because of business, of course, with COVID, and I didn't let them finish it. So I just put the unforeseen circumstances in there, which I thought would make sense to all of us. And that way, we have it there. So it's already addressed, if a parent question. The other one with concurrent, there were a couple of things that came up. The first thing on page three, we will not give any credit towards their GPA if they take a pass. What happened with some of the kids, the colleges were allowing them to choose to just take a pass. And we hadn't addressed that in here. So if they do, they don't get any credit because we can't assign. And they, because all we'll see is a P. And we have no idea if they had a D or had an F and just took a pass. Because the university controls that. So we'll just give them zero credit. It's not going to hurt them, but it's just not going to count for anything for them. So it'd be worthless for them to take that. But I did have kids that took that during the COVID situation, even though I tried to talk them out of it. But anyway, that came up again, we haven't addressed. The more important thing, I think, is on page six. And in the past, some of our students have exempted out of English four, for instance, is one of the classes. And what we have found is we've had some situations arise where a student dropped the class. And then we came to Christmas time, they had no English four credit. So instead of allowing them to exempt out and take the college class during their senior year, we are making them take it before, so we don't have that happen again and have a student who's not in good standing to graduate. So we don't want that ever to happen again. So as it stands, this year, those kids will be grandfathered in that are seniors. So they could technically, with approval, I mean, most of them have already kind of asked. So they will either be taking Comp 1 for their English four credit, or be in English four. But for the juniors and the rest of the kids upcoming, then they will have to take both English Comp 1 and English Comp 2 prior to their senior year to be able to exempt out of senior English. Just so we kind of have a security blanket. We don't want anybody to get in a troublesome situation for graduation. That'd be awful. And if you have questions, I'll be playing answer.
Part of that, those current classes that we've dealt with the last few years, is once those kids enroll in whatever college they choose, we can't check their grades like we can here. And so those things, we're not privy to that information until, honestly, it's too late. And we can't interject unless they offer up where those things are. So if we don't have some of these things in place, you know, to try to hit that off, it can present critique, criticism, and it has. And that's, I mean, there's great things with current classes. But that is, the negative part is that we don't have the availability to check on grades and monitor that like we would on our classes here in school.
Any other questions, concerns on Junior High and High School handbook changes? Is that all you had? Members made a motion, I second. Is there a second? Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the elementary handbook changes for the 21, 22s.
The elementary handbook didn't have a whole lot of changes. It was kind of making it up to date. Of course, the administration and faculty was updated. In our handbook, we currently have information pertaining to the three-year-old program, which we do not have this year. So those parts are just deleted and updated to reflect our current grade levels. We also had in there that teacher arrival time was 7:50, but actually it's 7:45, just to reflect when students could show up to school until 7:45. I think the biggest change was this year, we're going to try a new dismissal procedure to where we're divided into two sections, maybe speed up the car line a little bit. So we'll have first through fourth on the west side, and then prepaying kindergarten on the north side. So that was updated in there. Also, our school lunch was updated, just to reflect that they would be provided this year for everyone. That was about it.
Questions on elementary handbook changes? Members made a motion, I'll second. Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve adjunct teaching status for the 21, 22 for Brooke and Lindy.
John Burke Meyer is a teacher at Morehouse Technology Center for anatomy and physiology classes over there. And Burke Meyer is still high school science teacher here as an adjunct, up to three hours. She teaches, we got one hour of each of those in the schedule.
One hour each?
Okay. And so this, we have to do this and approve this at the board meeting in minutes to meet accreditation standards. Basically, those teachers would be teaching in areas that they're not fully certified in.
Motion to approve? Have a motion? Number second, Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number eight, discussion and vote to approve the library and statutory waiver deregulation for the library K-12 for the 21, 22 school year. Great, you can.
K-12 will be part-time librarian this year for the district. And we do have a waiver that's due for three years. This is just formality, I believe this is year two or three on that waiver.
Motion to approve? Members second, Judy?
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number nine, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve changes to the return to learn plan for the 21, 22.
In our return to learn plan, I think you all kind of talked about that now. This is something that it has to go along with the American Rescue Plan funding, that we will have to update this every six months. As of last week, some discussions and some information put out by the Oklahoma Secondary Schools, or School Board Association, excuse me, and information from the Health Department. Schools really have no authority to quarantine students for staff. And that's the information that we're given. Those things can be recommended, but the Health Department, that authority lies solely with them. Last year, that's not working, told, we were told we had to do something completely different. As all of this has gone with COVID, it's changed. This has to be updated every six months or so in alignment with the federal funding. But we do have things in this return to learn plan that we are using as kind of a policy. And so what, the changes that I think that we need to go through here and make is, we don't have authority to quarantine, and so we need to address all language in our return to learn plan that talks about that, and we need to get that changed. We're not required to do any contact tracing for a positive case. If there are positive cases, we absolutely do have a responsibility by state law that that is considered just like flu and other communicable diseases. We need to keep those people out of the building. But we are not required to do any contact tracing. I do think that, as a courtesy, I think that we can still do that. And we can do what we did last year, if there is a positive case. I think that we can look at our seating charts and notify parents and families that, you know, their student was exposed. Parent will have the option then to look at the recommendations from the Health Department. All of that information is on our website. It's all part of this plan. And then they will make the best decision for their kid at that point. So in our return to learn plan, it outlines just several things in there about what we're going to do if there is an exposure. And I think that needs to be updated with this new information that we receive before we start school. Like I said, identifying those close contacts, I feel like is a courtesy. It is not something that we are necessarily required to do. But I do think that that information given to parents, that they can make the best decisions for their students. Right now, it really, I mean, it does take a little bit of time to go through and do that. And as long as our resources and time are available and we can handle that, I think that that's still something that we can continue to do if we are notified of a positive case. And again, that is information that we can just go seek out. It's going to have to be given to us. And we will still work with the Health Department if there are several positive cases. We'll do what we're supposed to do there. But unless there is a written order given to us that somebody has to quarantine, again, we have no, we have no authority there in those regards to tell somebody that they have to quarantine.
Questions for the return to learn plan? If not, I'm making a motion to approve the changes to the return to learn plan for the 21, 22.
Lowfield?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number 10, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve HB 1775, policy in accordance with the state standard accreditation effective July 2021.
So as of July, all schools, House Bill 1775 addresses critical race theory. And what it is, is I have a policy here that I've given you from the State School Board Association that they have typed up. Basically, it says the Board of Education hereby directs the head of district, or the employee of the district shall teach or include any course for students or employees following discriminatory principles. I'm not going to read all of those out loud for you. But number one, I think, pretty much sums up what this is about. But it says that employees will not follow the discriminating toward principles of one race or sex being inherently superior to another race or sex. There was a lot of, a lot of debate about whether this was necessary or not. Regardless, it is state law. We do have to have a policy that addresses this. We will be talking to our teachers and staff, making them aware, essential proof of state that this needs to be in the handbook. We have this policy. This policy also outlines the process that an individual may go through if they do have a complaint and they feel that this is not being followed. And it would give me, as the superintendent responsible for receiving those complaints, it spells out how those complaints will be processed, it gives time, dates, all the. it spells out how those complaints will be processed, it gives times, dates, all of that. Basically, what this is saying, and I'll do my best to sum it up, is that the school nor a teacher should take a position when it comes to critical race theory one way or the other, especially at the high school level. There are going to be conversations that do happen in classrooms, and so it has happened for a very long time. These conversations are not necessarily new, but as things have progressed, Oklahoma, we now have a state law that strictly forbids a teacher or a school taking a position one way or the other on this issue. And so if the teachers will stay to the standards in their teaching, this isn't a problem. This isn't an issue. If they don't, there's a policy that addresses us now. And so that's what we're doing here. Like I said, this is the policy from the School Board Association. This is the one that I recommend we adopt. We do have to have it to be compliant, and we will throw it in appropriate places once it is adopted and approved.
Questions? Make a motion to approve. Amber? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number 11, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the interlocal agreement with Alphatah County Board and Commissioners and the Church of Public Schools for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
This is our local agreement, something that we can do yearly. This gives us an opportunity to receive some in-kind services with the county, and I believe that would impact this city as well, since it is inside Alphatah County. And so county helps us out several times. We try to help out the city, and the city does the same thing for us, the county. This is just the agreement that allows all that kind of...
Motion to approve. First made a motion. Is there a second? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number 12, board to consider and take action on the employment of Stephen L. Smith, Corp. 2 financial consultants to the school district for the school fiscal year 21-22.
Stephen Ossman, Campbell, Old Iron, Fawns, and those financial services. Candy Davis, who is kind of our contact there and does a great job and gives pretty timely information.
Motion to approve. Amber's second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Little Phil?
Yes.
There's also two papers over there to sign for that.
Okay. Number 13, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the district level services program agreement with COSA for 21-22 school year.
I'm sure if that's something that we've been a part of, I will tell you, it's $1,500 a year, and what this is going to do with COSA, COSA provides a lot of the professional development, especially for administrators. And so I think with our new team of administrators, it's definitely beneficial. We've already looked through some of the programs that they offer. We can take those things without this, but they are several hundred dollars apiece as the year goes, and there are several things on the list that I think we've done that our administrative team greatly. And so I would like to, I would like to sign up for the district level services program this year and take advantage of that for myself and for Mr. Pruitt and Mrs. Patterson. I think if your leaders get better, everybody can get better.
Questions? Number seven made a motion to approve, all second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number 14, principals report.
Um, last week we had enrollment, so we had enrollment Tuesday and Wednesday. Right now, as it looks, high school enrollment is at 108 students, which is down three from where we ended the year last year. I think our eighth grade class is smaller than our graduating senior class was, is where most of it came from. Our junior high enrollment is at 93. We ended the last year with 85, so that's up eight. Most schools start this week, so we'll know more, this is still preliminary, so we'll know more this week for sure if we're going to gain or lose. I mean, we might not know if we gain it until next week. If we lose anymore, I don't see us losing anymore, but that's kind of where we're at. So we're down three in the high school and up eight in the junior high, so overall, that's good. Drake Williams was a national proficiency finalist in agricultural sales. He'll be competing against three other FFA members from across the nation for the title of national proficiency winner in agriculture sales. Interviews will be conducted in September, and Drake will be recognized during the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis held in October, so that's pretty cool. And then softball, started practice a few weeks ago, but their first game was today in Ian, they were playing Garver. I haven't heard how that came out yet. First home game for them is tomorrow, junior high and high school here. Football, two days started today. I went out there this morning, there's a lot of kids out there, so, and I got hot today. There's a football scrimmage on the 20th, I believe that's here.
Yes.
At, I don't have...
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
So the first high school football game is August 27th at Le Verne, and the first elementary junior high game is August 30th here versus UCLA. Cross country starting practice, I think, high school starts, junior high, elementary starts next week, I believe, and their first meet will be August 31st out at the lake. So I'm sure I'm missing something, but...
Sounds good.
Meet the Chiefs?
Yeah.
Meet the Chiefs.
What was that?
The 24th, I think. Twenty-fifth. Okay. Okay. Meet the Chiefs, 25th.
At the elementary, we have 23 new students enrolled, and one of those is in fifth grade, so that's exciting. And we have nine that have left. I don't know until May 14th, how many?
I don't know.
We're still getting some trickle in. We do have all of our school supplies, last summer we're delivering today, so it's all ready for the teachers. Back to school night is on the 18th, and it'll be from 5:30 to 7:00. We're hoping to make this kind of a fun night for the kiddos. We have Scotty's frozen ice cream and stuff coming, and then we're going to serve pizza so parents don't have to go home and do their after-party. So, other than that, get ready.
Number 15, superintendent's report.
Although basically, now both of the board principals have stated, enrollment really seems to be up overall. Looks good, we're growing, and I just want to commend both of them, Mr. Jordan, with that growth and with the bust that we went through last year, putting it all together and making it work the best they can. Students getting schedules set up, getting classes and all that put together, that takes on a lot of work. Enrollment in itself is a huge chore, and they've all done a great job, I think, to make that as painless as possible for everybody, and so they've done a great job with that. Next week, teachers report on the 16th, we will have three days of in-service. The first day will be a lot of just hearing from us, really as new administration and our expectations, and the ideas and visions that we have for this next school year and then beyond that. We have Sean Buchanan lined up to present to our teachers on Tuesday morning, and Sean is, I know him from back when I was at Mountain View a long time ago, and he's come up and is currently a superintendent at Gary, which is a school that is really our size, and he's had to overcome a lot of challenges there, a lot more than we really have to deal with here, but he's done a great job. I've read his book, and he's got some great ideas on what we can do to foster and build relationships with teachers and parents that will benefit the student. And so we've met with him as an administrative team and listened to his ideas already. Really like what he has to say. I'm pretty excited for our teachers to get to listen to him and hear his ideas and then what we can take from that as a school and kind of turn that into our own and how that aligns with our, our goals for this year and then pass that as well. I met last week, at the end of the week, with our federal programs consultation team, and that is part of the American Rescue Plan funding process. We have to have a consultation team that meets, and we've had some really good feedback. There's some parents that sit on that committee, a couple of our teachers, Mrs. Patterson and myself. Mr. Jordan missed out on that first meeting, but she'll be on that as well. But I really did, we got some good feedback in a lot of different areas and talked about some ideas and kind of some expectations on what we could do with that critical funding. And right now, there has to be 20% of that that is set aside to address learning loss. And one area we've identified is our, well, is during the summer, and what we can do for our students during the summertime and provide some more opportunities. So that's something we're going to continue to talk about throughout the year and see if that's an area that we can develop. Again, like I said, there's 20% that has to be set aside for that, so there would be funding put in place for a program like that, and then, you know, hopefully at some point, we can build off of that, and that will be something that won't just end with that funding, but something we can continue. So again, took some really good things away from that meeting. Parents that we had sit on that consultation team were very open and honest with us and had some good input, and so I really like getting their feedback from that. As we discussed a little bit, COVID situation, you know, unfortunately, those things have gone away. Their Senate Bill 658 prohibits schools' technology centers from issuing any kind of mask mandates, so if there's any questions about that, no, masks will not be mandated. If you want to wear one, wear one. Nobody's going to tell you you can't. Kind of the same things with vaccinations to address that as well. Those can be mandatory for staff or students, and so we're following the laws when it comes to those things. And we will continue to monitor that as situations come up and take care of it the best we can. We're still going to continue with some of our spring sanitation efforts that we did last year. You know, we're not ignoring that by any means. We're going to do the best we can with the resources that we have available to us. Other than that, like I mentioned earlier, gross production was back up from what it was last year, so we've had two positive starts for this fiscal year and this school year. Those are things that we really can't control, but we're going to celebrate them when they, when they come out on the good side. So right now, you know, everything is looking good, continuing to work on our preliminary budget, which we won't get our estimated needs until probably next month sometime, and then we'll start putting that together, but as of right now, everything that we had to do last year, things are lining up, and I'm not really seeing anything, just unexpected, unforeseen, and so I think things are going to work out well for us this year. Facilities are looking great, and I can't say enough about Billy and Bucky and Aiden and Latham. They've really worked extremely hard this year, keeping everything up and going, and so I think we are just all but, we're ready to get the kids back in here and do what we do.
Thanks, Chris. Any new business on 16th?
There is no new business.
Number 17, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Little Phil?
Yes.